I'd like to call the Monday, February 28th, 2022 School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Walker?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Here.
Inspector Arndt?
Here.
Chair Diaz?
Here.
At seven present at 6:00 PM.
Thanks so much. All, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Great. So before we can get to you kids, we have to do some business first, okay? So just wait for us. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes. Looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight.
Still moved?
Second.
Great, oh, you're...
Ah, wow.
You want to get to the kids here?
I did my sentence.
Johnny and Joe on the spot.
As well as the committee of regular meeting minutes from February 14th, the special school board meeting minutes from February 2nd, February 7th, and February 16th, 2022.
Still moved?
Second.
Thanks, thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. And that motion carries. And now it's your turn. Welcome, Quality in Action.
Is that a new thing, a round of applause to start? You haven't even heard what these kids have to say yet.
We just know how good a show you're gonna be.
I guess so, yes. Well, thank you for the invitation once again. You know, this is one of our favorite times of year, three times a year, that we get to bring some kids and some staff members and show off the great things that we're doing in our schools. So I want to welcome, I want to welcome this group of kids who you're going to meet and our PYP coordinator, Mr. Bretz. And then also just a hello to the school board and to Dr. Webb and to Dr. Zambrino and to our honored guests. We get to Lisa and Lisa needs like a Dr. Brandecker or something. And then a full house, which is always really cool. So moving forward, you know, the pandemic has brought schools several challenges as we know. We're wearing one on our face tonight, as you're well aware. For our youngest learners, though, a lack of academic exposure to the basic building blocks of reading has been one of them. We also know that finding enough adult academic supports in schools has been a challenge as well. And hence, we have the formation of the Capoja Letter Tracers, who are right here. And tonight, with the help of Capoja's PYP coordinator, Mr. Bretz, he's going to introduce a few of our student tutors to you. I think it was mentioned at a presentation in the fall, so this is kind of follow-up to the fall. And explain their contributions and why they're excellent examples of PYP students and how they give back to our school community. So please welcome Dr. Bretz and the Letter Tracers. I feel like they're going to sing a song now. So, all right. Step up to the mic, you guys.
All right, just a second. So thank you, Mr. Betoey, and thank you, school board members. So we have three of our fifth grade tutors with us tonight, and they're going to take the show over in just a second and share a little bit about their experiences. So they'll each have a turn, and then I'll wrap it up, and then we'd be happy to take any questions that you have. So I'll have you introduce yourselves one by one.
Hi, my name is Nora Wardell, and I'm from Ms. Lucas's class.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Lamosandrade, and I'm from Ms. Lucas's class.
I can't understand them.
Hi, I'm Maximilian Acualpanahla, and I'm from Ms. Sanish's class.
Oh, I was going to remind you too, when you're presenting, you can take off your masks too. Yeah.
It's okay.
When it's your turn. So we're going to have Nora start us off, and she's going to explain a little bit about how we teach the students alphabet tracing. Go ahead, Nora.
So first, when we get to the classroom, we have an alphabet tracing book, and we will ask them to identify the capital letter. And then if they make any mistakes, we will correct them, and then they can move on to the lowercase letter. Any mistakes, we'll correct them, and then we move on to the object. And there are one, two, and three, so they can figure out like the steps on what to do first.
Yay, cool. All right. Thank you, Nora. And then Max is going to speak a little bit about how we meet students each day and how we work with them in their classrooms.
So what we do is Mr. Bretz picks us up, and we either chat about what we're going to do today with the classrooms, or we'll just chat about something else. After that, we go to our table, and Mr. Bretz gives us our folders. Inside those folders are an alphabet book, a script, and a checklist to mark off the kids that are done with their alphabet trees. We go to their class, and then after that, when we're done with that class, we go back to Mr. Bretz. And if Mr. Bretz is not there, we leave our folder there. We can either walk by ourselves, go as a group, or go with Mr. Bretz back to our class, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. And now Ingrid is going to share some of our tutors' favorite things about working with kindergarten students.
So as you can see on your screen about some of the ideas or best parts of tutoring from other tutors, I just wanted to share my best ways. I really like seeing kids smile, learning. And I really like because they can like improve, and I can see that I'm really working hard on them. And when I'm having a bad day, they really cheer me up, and I really just like tutoring, and I think it's really fun to do.
Way to go. Thank you, Ingrid. And also, just as the coordinator of the project, it brings a lot of smiles to my face as well, just to see that work together. And we've also had some really exceptional results. So in the fall, we screened all of our kindergarten students, and the students we serve are students who know fewer than 40 letters of the alphabet, upper and lowercase combined. So in September, we had 87 students who we were serving, and as of today, we've reduced that number to 24. So we're seeing real progress in the grade level, and we would expect that all of our students within the next four weeks or so might be graduated from the program. So, yeah, so we're very, very excited about that. So that's what we have to share tonight, and as I said earlier, we'd be very happy to take any questions that you have.
Great. I have a question. What is your favorite thing about reading?
Who of us?
Any of you?
Yeah.
Somebody take it.
You can step up. Your favorite thing about reading?
Just reading the letters.
Just reading letters?
Also, if it's a comic book, I like seeing the pictures.
I like hearing about different like adventures and stuff.
I really like history books, and I think they could become really interesting.
I have a question.
I also love how books sometimes have characteristics with the main characters, and I like that.
Oh, yeah. 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 So how does it feel to you to know that you've made a difference? How does that feel for you?
It makes me feel happy and proud, and I feel good about myself, and I'm happy I achieved something for the first time.
Thank you.
And I love helping all those kids.
Yeah, thanks for what you're doing.
It makes me feel proud of the work I'm putting into helping the kids.
Great.
I really feel confident, and I can finally know that I learned how to teach something.
Wow. Excellent job. That's fantastic.
Excellent.
And you know, Ingrid, how you had said that working with those kindergarteners lifts your spirits? I know that when you all walk in the room, that those kindergartners are so happy to see you. I bet, I bet they just get silly, huh?
And having you guys come and talk with us lifts our spirits.
Yeah, absolutely.
Totally lifts our spirits.
Great job, guys.
Dr. Webb?
So my question was just, first of all, amazing program, amazing work, and thanks for all the students that you're helping. So I'm wondering about kind of bigger picture with your school. When you get out of bed in the morning and you're going to school, what are you most looking forward to? Because you're at this amazing, amazing school called Capoja Education Center. What do you most look forward to every day?
I look forward to getting to learn something new every day.
I'm looking forward to seeing my friends and help myself learn and grow.
I really think that the activities can also be fun, and some people think that it's boring, but helps your education grow up, and then you can become really successful.
Yeah, well done.
Woo-hoo.
Thank you. Yeah.
So we are just so proud of each of you. We're proud of your leaders in the school as well. And look at all the kids that are just being helped in kindergarten by your great efforts. So thank you on behalf of our school board and the entire school district. Way to go.
We have about 16 tutors.
Wow.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, they all kind of jumped at the chance. I don't know if it was to get out of class at first.
No.
They're highly skilled and trained, and secondary benefit to this too is we're training substitute teachers for very soon. They don't know it yet, but it's coming, okay?
I have one last question, Terry.
Yes, sir.
Just because I haven't talked for a while. But any of the three of you considering staying in fifth grade another year and helping another group of kindergarteners? Raise your hands if you're going to stay in fifth grade for another year. One out of three, that's, that's pretty good. You hit 333, you play into majors, right?
They're all moving on.
Thanks. Thank you.
But thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, the bracelet.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wave, say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Have a good night. Thanks for bringing them, parents. Yes. Very much.
So we can start kind of making our...
All right. We'll move on to the less exciting report section of the agenda. There were no public listening session submissions today, so I just want to give you a little update, a little recap on our superintendent search. We're really excited today because we have completed our mission, was our duty as a board, and it was a lot of work, a lot of months. If you remember back in December, we had asked for stakeholder feedback. We'd gotten with our superintendent search firm 19 candidates. Remember that, right? We did our first round of interviews that gave us seven great candidates. You know, we looked at a lot of factors. We took into account the feedback. There was a huge application packet to look through for every applicant. The interviews themselves, background checks. I personally made about two dozen reference call checks that then I shared with the entire board about. And then per the will of the board, we chose Dr. Brian Zambrino. He's fluent in Spanish, he has great experience with diverse populations, an equity leader, special ed experience. Like he came to us with all of these gifts. And so because of the revised retirement from Dr. Webb, which Dr. Brian Zambrino will be starting with us March 14th, Dr. Webb will be leaving us March 11th. We will have an overlap of one week so that that transition between the two superintendents will be smooth, and they can talk about issues that are currently at stake here for the district. So with all of that, we are here to start this transition. We'd been talking about handing the baton off and, or the torch, the maybe the Olympic torch, right? So Dr. Webb?
Yes.
Any words?
Yeah, and feel free to take your mask off too, Brian. And Dr. Zambrino is here with us tonight. We're just super excited that you're joining our Packer team. So we might not pass the torch, but we might pass a Packer wristband.
It's a little match.
To get you started. Just, I just want to build for a minute on what Linda had to say. So first of all, you should know that superintendents go to the same superintendent store. Maroon and gray is a good combination. But seriously, we are so glad you're here.
Honestly, glad to be here.
Thank you. And so I'd just share with the community that my family is needing more attention right now due to some family medical circumstances. So the whole date of my retirement was scheduled for the end of June. Because we announced back in October, because we were one of the first districts to say, hey, we want to get you time to plan and get organized. The board got organized and got planning, got great community feedback and input, and you were able to get out first and get a number one draft pick for South St. Paul. So I'll just build on a couple of those compliments that Linda shared. And just our short time and collaboration and connection. Dr. Zambrino listens incredibly well. He takes time, he pauses and waits for you to complete ideas before he jumps in with his own and next steps. That's one of the greatest gifts a new superintendent is going to bring in the very first year, is to listening, to listen to your constituents, to listen to what the board wants, what the staff wants, what our parents and kids and community want. He'll be doing that extremely well. When you look at his roots of starting out as a teacher and starting out as a special education teacher, I always think some of our special education teachers are the most amazing teachers. Because in one special ed classroom, which may only have 10 or 15 kids in it, every one of those students has a different lesson plan going forward. The needs in one special ed classroom can be so diverse that you have to have a really unique gift moving forward. Next, he went from being a special ed teacher into an EL classroom, an English learner classroom. And if you listen to that story, and he'll maybe share a little bit tonight more about that. But to have 30 students of diverse backgrounds that speak many different languages, and it's your job to really help them to learn English. Again, you have multiple lesson plans going on in one classroom, not one size fits all, and that was his roots and growth. He went on to get his education and eventually his doctorate too, but to go into assistant principals and principals in districts just our size, and then to have big district experience of districts 10 times our size is truly amazing. So tonight, I'm really super excited about this handoff. It came in an incredibly important time for my family. I am so proud of what we've accomplished together. I said in my message to staff on Friday, nothing that, nothing great that happened here was Dave Webb. What was great is what we did together, our administrative team every single day, our teachers and our staff and our cooks and our custodians working together for kids. And I'm 100% confident that Brian Zambrino will be taking us to a new next level. What I also reflect back on is I'll just share one of my favorite stories. One of my very first months on the job here, I got a call, and it was from a colleague that I'd been in the same doctorate program, who was the interim pastor for our Methodist church right across from the high school. And she called and said, Dave, I'm the interim pastor, and we're going through some tough times at our church, and I'm wondering if you'd like to buy our church? And I thought, jeez, I'm like three months on the job, and I'm getting a question, would you like to buy our church? And little did I know that the next 12 years of my career would be a whole lot of real estate. Here in South St. Paul, and building a new school just in a pandemic two years ago was amazing. But coming back to this church, we toured the church, we huddled, we listened, we planned, and we brainstormed an option for, not for us to buy that church, but to talk to the Hispanic church that was located in the middle of our high school parking lot, that for many years, the city and the school district wanted to see if there could be other arrangements made. And doors began to open up when we, and speaking Spanish was a gift, to be able to knock on the door and have a Spanish conversation with that Hispanic church. And we began meeting with the Methodist church and that Hispanic church, and the city joined in and jumped in with us. And pretty soon, we, after six months later, had an agreement for the city and the school district to collaboratively buy this church in our parking lot, to split the expenses there, to allow the Hispanic church to move across the street, to buy the Methodist church, to allow the Methodist church to join forces with another Methodist church here in a neighboring community to strengthen what they were doing. And we ended up with a win, 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 win in just about a six-month period of conversations. And that's what I think lies ahead for Dr. Zambrino and the wonderful relationships that he'll build, the listening that he'll do to move our community forward. So I'm going to quiet down. I'm going to just say, I'll be here one more board meeting, you're not quite done with me yet. I'll be here on the 14th. But I just want to thank the South St. Paul community. I want to thank our students, our staff, our incredible board and leadership team, Lisa Brandecker, many people up and down the lines of our 500-plus staff, as being one of the largest employers in our community for 12 incredible years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's hear a little bit more.
I have to follow that literally and figuratively.
So let's turn it over to you and welcome you.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. And Dr. Webb has been just incredibly welcoming, as have many of you and Chair Diaz. You have been amazing to bring us forward in a positive way. So obviously, very excited to be here this evening, and I shared before, humbled to be part of the process, even more so to be getting to the end of that process, starting from 19, and being the one who's going to get that opportunity. I know that a lot of folks were in the interviews, but that a lot of people weren't able to hear the conversation, so I just thought I would share a little bit. Dr. Webb did a nice job of laying out some of my experience, but did start out as a special education teacher. As you mentioned, working with students with all different disability designations, which was a great grounding for my career to learn about advocacy for students. Then had an opportunity to work as an EL teacher, working with new-to-country students, primarily refugees. Both of those student groups, I always say, I'd love to think I taught them more than they taught me. I don't really think that, I mean, I hope so, but I learned so much from them and their families and their experiences. And that was in Minneapolis, so a big district there, and then transitioned over to St. Paul when I did the EL. So had that experience of the big districts, enjoyed those opportunities, but did fall in love with the smaller district setting when I was in Richfield. So eight years as middle school principal, and loved the fact that everybody who chose the school district came through my building, and so really got to know everybody, the parents, the kids, and of course, the community. Dr. Webb spoke about the people I shared before. That is really what drew me into this opportunity so much, is as I shared, schools aren't made of bricks and mortar, they're made of people, the amazing kids who presented here. A little bit about my philosophy, I'll just share, you know, I'm a believer in people. I believe in kids, the limitless capability of the students. You saw that, I think we saw maybe a future teacher in the one of them there. I'm like, let's recruit already, we'll build out that pipeline. But I also believe in the adults in the organization as well, and I shared my desire to really make sure we're a learning organization, where we take risks and we learn and grow together in that continuous improvement cycle. Coming here most recently from Minneapolis Public Schools, so got to go full circle in my career a little bit. Currently working with a portfolio of eight middle schools, so a pretty wonderful experience, but looking forward again to coming in and being able to support at that smaller, more personal touch, as I think I shared last time. Going from maybe a corporate to that community model, and just can't wait to dig into the community. I shared last time, I will be the number one champion and cheerleader for the district, and I expect that to be the case. I will ask for just this much grace, as I'm realizing like I'm about to jump in right away in the middle of the spring when you all ask me, what's your plan for the summer to transition? Okay, so, you know, but I'm glad we're able to make this work, and I do want to even make sure to thank my current superintendent Ed Graff for being willing to work with us, because that was a big ask to come in and say, so the board chair and I were talking about negotiations, and she ended by asking me how soon you can start, and he kind of gulped, you know? But after talking to Dave and to Linda, it was very clear that it was the right thing to do. So I appreciate the support, the well wishes of all my colleagues who are kind of like, can't believe you're leaving us, but we're so happy for you. So they, they get the need, and this is my life's dream to jump into this kind of an opportunity. Trying to think if I covered everything that people at home might want to hear, I'm seeing a head nod, so again, just can't wait to get going. And one last thing I'll share, just Dave and I talked about making sure that we have a lasting partnership. He shared the ongoing relationship he's had with his predecessors and that commitment that we have to staying in touch. Even though he'll be stepping away formally, we'll, we'll be in close contact, and I know that if there's something I need, I got a friend I can call and say, okay, help me out with this one. So thank you so much for that offer, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
If you would like you for, you're welcome to sit down.
I will sit down. Thank you so much.
Great, yeah.
How great is that?
Superintendent Webb, if you could give us a highlights from around the district.
Yeah, so that, there's probably no bigger highlight than that tonight. So, and can I just congratulate the board and everyone who gave input in the process, and just really proud for our future. All right, here's our update, our superintendent update for this evening. So we had a number of student celebrations that we want to give a shout out to. We had our personal project fair, our NYPD personal project fair just last week, where our 10th graders were able to showcase and show off their products. And we had, the gymnasium was full of all of the 10th graders' personal projects, so just a great event. And a shout out to Melissa Miller and our 10th grade humanities teachers that helped coordinate that. We also have our 2022 Athena Award recipient that was named, so Abby Rosebur, shout out to her. Not only is a great soccer player, All-Star, and MVP for our conference, but she's a two-time All-Conference Honorable Mention in basketball, track and field as well. So we get these three sport athletes, which is pretty rare these days, where high school students are that dedicated every day after school for the entire year. So a shout out to her, I know she's going, and she was here just a few months ago, shared she's going to Augsburg, so we wish her well. What a great pick of our fourth place state tournament. I'll just... I'll just say champs, because they are, that we got into the state tournament. So rare that you can get through all the playoffs and all the craziness that happens in those playoffs, get to that championship game and win. They did, they got into the state tournament, won their first game, and had a great ride at the tournament. And a shout out to our coaches and our players. I'd like to just do a shout out to the families, because the families go above and beyond, huffing their kids oftentimes to those early morning and late-night practices, so to the entire hockey family there, way to go. Girls wrestling, first ever this year in our state of Minnesota. We have two wrestlers heading to the state tournament. So, this coming Saturday, I believe, is our state tournament for girls. So, Ella and Kashan, way to go.
Yeah.
We have six boys that are getting into the high school tournament as well, Shane, Tomas, Andrew, Nixon, Nate, and William. Hats off to you as well. We have a medley relay team, Steven, Daniel, John, Colin, heading to our swimming state tournament, boys swimming. Here's a shot of 100 days of kindergarten. So, we have 100 days, smarter hats, we have projects with number hundreds, dress as if you're 100 years old. You just can't shake the theme of 100 these days in our kindergarten class, so lots of fun. We have some opportunities to check out as we move forward. We have our spring break camps, again, I mentioned this last board meeting, just another shout out to things like Mega Mess and Glow-in-the-Dark Art Camp and Claylicious. Great opportunities if you're looking for an opportunity for your kids during spring We have an SSP Pound Fitness Class, just a cardio jam session on Saturdays that will go for the next many weeks, 11:15 to 12:00, a shout out of one of many things that our community ed program are doing well at Central Square. So, shout out to them. We have a few upcoming calendar of events. We have No School, March 11th and 14th, March 17th and 24th. We have our Family Connections Day, like family conference days. And then we have Spring Break, the 28th through April 1st. And back to you.
Great, thank you. Up next is our consented items, and consent items are items that come through each meeting that don't need much discussion, like bills payable, financial claims, staffing. So, we're looking for a motion for approval of our consent items. So, moved. Second?
Second.
Great, thanks. Any discussion?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Then we do have a second reading review for our policy. It is our fund balance policy, number 702.1. The, for the policies, they are on the agenda for three consecutive agendas so that we can review them, the community can review them before we actually finalize on the third. Looking for a motion to approve, the school board to approve the rescinding, oops, of the COVID-19 vaccination testing quarantine and face covering policy, number 808. And we have a lot of discussion around this, but do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Fantastic discussion.
So, who knew two years after the pandemic started, we'd still be talking about masking, right? So, tonight is one more night of this, just discussing and highlighting the new CDC guidance that's come regarding masking. So, for two years, we've really been, the majority of the time, requiring masking in our school district to keep us safe. And last Friday, this CDC and our Minnesota Department of Health continued to stay in communication with us as the new CDC guidance rolled forward. What we are recommending tonight from our administrative team is to align with the new CDC guidance to shift from masks required to our masks recommended and optional. As we move forward with that recommendation, we are continuing to have a number of our same COVID protocols of good hygiene and hand washing and continuing to practice things like social distancing and supporting all the good practices we've learned over the past two years. We also want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable continuing to wear a mask in school or on the bus, but we're not requiring it in our recommendation any longer moving forward after tonight on the bus or in school or in classrooms program-wide. Tonight, we're bringing this recommendation forward to rescind our policy and continue to support best COVID practices and follow our CDC guidance and continue to do so in the years ahead. There may be a time when COVID comes back, maybe in a different form. That could be in a month, six months, a year, and we want to point and continue to point back to the CDC guidance that works more on a stoplight system of red, yellow, and green. Our COVID numbers are low. We're at the lowest mark that we've seen, even lower than last summer when we thought we were done with COVID and everyone was not wearing masks. We have now dropped to even lower mark as far as total infection rates in our county. And so, tonight, we are recommending rescinding our mask policy, which includes also things like our vaccinations and all the rest that were tied in there as well. But we are looking to rescind policy 808. So, is it, I might have got the number wrong.
Nope, 808, you're right.
So, that's in front of you tonight.
Great, thank you, Dr. Webb. Board members, any discussion?
I'll jump in. I think this has probably been one of the more challenging elements that the board has faced, as every other school district has as well. We've heard from many of you in the community and your feelings about masks, both for and against, some of you stopping me in the grocery store through the time just to have this discussion. I think, you know, the board discussed this in the Cow meeting, we're in support of this. But we also have, also stated that we're going to kind of open up and show you the tools on how we're basing those decisions as well. I think one of the misperceptions that has been out there and that has led to some feelings about board members through the processes that we're somehow being secretive about how we're making these decisions. We are looking for professional guidance beyond us as we make these decisions and will continue to do so going forward.
Great, anybody else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
That'll be in effect tomorrow, right?
Yes, so we will put out communication tonight, all of our communication is ready to roll, so that'll go out to our families and staff that the board has approved this tonight. And that'll be effective midnight tonight, so.
Awesome.
Thanks.
So, for our four fans that are watching on cable TV.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving into the business items section of our meeting, we have two very important business items, both having to do with our contracts for Dr. Zambrino. I'm looking for a motion to approve the superintendent of schools employment agreement with Brian Zambrino effective March 14th, 2022, through June 30th, 2022. Double move, great, thank you.
Second.
Fantastic. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, thank you. And the second one is to approve the superintendent of schools employment agreement with Brian Zambrino effective July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, welcome. It's kind of exciting. So, now we move on to informational items, board member reports, and we can start on the end with Wendy.
I just want to put a welcome out to Dr. Zambrino. We're so excited to have you here with us. We appreciate the experience that you've had as, in your history with teaching and everything that you've done. So, thank you and welcome. We support you and we're here for you also. And I just want to put a huge thank you out to all of our students who have been active in the winter athletics and activities. Appreciate everything that you've done and those that have opportunity to attend state events, we congratulate you. And I'm sure you're all excited and thinking about spring sports, which should be starting here in just a few weeks. So, let's bring spring on and everybody stay safe and thank you very much.
Well, this happens often where I get ready to say something and the person right in front of me. I also want to congratulate and thank all of the students and staff involved with the winter activities. In Dr. Webb's update, you saw all of the people that are moving on to state tournaments and such, but it also includes all of the entertainment and such that we've had throughout the whole winter. So, I just want to congratulate them and say thank you for their efforts. And also, now that we seem to be at kind of a breaking point with masking and all of the other provisions that are going by the wayside with the policy being rescinded, I really want to give a thank you to the staff, the families, and in particular, the students for all of the efforts that they have gone through over the past couple of years. It's, was like the learning types last year where it was constantly shifting back and forth and that, I know it can be stressful when you're trying to decide what you should be doing and how to enforce it if you were the staff members that were dealing with it. And I just want to thank everyone for sticking with it and doing what they had to do. It was a monumental effort and, but we're through it now, knock on wood. And I just want to say thank you for all the efforts. It really was noticed and appreciated. And a big welcome to Dr. Zambrino.
Also, a thank you to all of the staff and community members who attended the interviews and especially that second round, boy, that is screwed up. And took time to write thoughtful responses to the final three interviews. And that was a, that was a level of dedication and commitment to our schools that you were willing to come and sit through that. It was, those were long days. But anyway, I, just a couple other things, and I know, I think this was in Terry, or Chuck's high school newsletter, but I wanted to give a personal thank you to the class of 2000, which happens to be one of my son's graduating year. They raised money and I think they were able to gather over $1,400 and they bought coffee and donuts and rolls for all of the schools in South St. Paul, brought them to the staff lounge to say thank you for what they have done in this pandemic. So, I think that reflects well on our district, our graduates, that they would have that kind of thoughtful concern. So, thank you. And then the thirdly, and I meant to bring this with me and I forgot, but I read a little note from the Peace Guide at Capoja. And the Peace Guide told a story about a young boy, no names, who was having trouble in the lunchroom and being disrespectful to lunch staff. And it was really becoming a problem. And so, the Peace Guide started talking with this student, you know, walking through it, talking about how we're respectful to everybody in the building and so forth, and then asked if he would be willing to apologize. And he said, "No." And so, she, she let him go back, but it stayed with her and she was like, "There's more to this, I need to bird dog this." And she went back to the boy and sat down with him again and talked about relationships and respect, you know, and that it's important that when mistakes are made that you apologize. And she got him through a lot of work to go to the lunchroom staff and gave a very sincere apology to the staff. And the teacher of this student just was so thankful that the Peace Guide had the time and took the time to follow through on this where it could have gotten lost in the cracks with everything else that's going on in the schools. So, I just, I just thought it was wonderful and how important that kind of support is in our schools. So, thank you, that was long, but.
Thank you, no, no, absolutely, absolutely needed. Bill?
My turn already? Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
I have four shout-outs that, first, to Coach Palmquist and his group of women's hockey team who represented us so well at the state tournament. It's, we didn't get into the figures, but he's been our coach for 28 years, all 28 years we've had it, he's been there 16 times. If I can do my South St. Paul math correctly, that's 60% of the time, South St. Paul has been represented by Coach Palmquist in the state tournament. And that's unbelievable that, and he's won four state championships besides, so shout out to them. My second shout-out, and I'm glad nobody has mentioned this because I've been waiting to say basketball. South St. Paul is undefeated in basketball and they're going into the playoffs now. And if you don't get a chance to see them, shame on you. It is so exciting and so much fun to go and they represent themselves so well that, you know, I can't say enough about them. Third, and I know my son isn't going to talk to me about this, but I want to give a shout out to my grandson, Josh, who's a 152-pound wrestler in Nebraska and was named All-State last weekend. And fourth, but not last, congratulations, Brian, and we look forward to working with you and getting to know you better. And I know you're going to do a bang-up job, so you know you have my support as well as the rest of the school board. So, congratulations again, Brian.
Thank you.
And I'm done.
I would like to start by also thanking just all the community members who were involved in the superintendent search. It's not something I've ever been through again and hopefully something I won't have to go through in the near, in the near future. But thank you for all of your emails, thank you for sitting through hours of meetings. For those who haven't been to an interview in the public, it's quite the experience. And so, I just want to thank everyone for being involved, for your feedback, it was just very well, well worth it. And thank you, just congratulations and thank you, Dr. Zambrino. I think it's going to be a great adventure that we are, that we are embarking upon. And I know Dave has one more meeting, but I just want, also want to do a special shout out. I came onto the board last year, had absolutely no idea what I was doing. And just the phone calls and guidance, you truly are a class act and you really will be missed in this district. Moving on to, I also want to do another big shout out to Shawnee Kruger, who's been our lead COVID coordinator over these past many, many long months. She's done just yeoman's work along with her whole team. And any email, comment, question, she's always been there to answer them and she really deserves all the kudos for everything. she's always been there to answer them, and she really deserves all the kudos for everything in our district. And I asked Bill, I said, when's the basketball game starting? Like, when are the playoffs? Because I've been to a couple of games this year. It truly is very entertaining and so much fun to watch the students play.
All right. Most of my list has been eaten up by other board members, so I just want to also give a shout-out to Connie Garland on her way out as well. I first met her when I sent my child off to kindergarten at the Boo-Hoo-Yahoo breakfast that she would host for parents. And then I think my next interaction was when I was an upset parent over a crisis, but her steady guidance and also teaching parents how to be school-aged parents, when all you've known before that is just you and your own child. Her mentorship and guidance for our district and so many other families is so incredibly valuable and is going to be deeply missed, so.
Great. I have a couple. Wanted to thank our communications folks, Donette in the audience there, and Lisa, who brought us hand-in-hand through this whole journey, really being such a great support. Thank you so much. It was a lot of work to get here, and it doesn't quite feel over yet. So if I keep reaching out with dumb questions, thanks for answering them. I wanted to say too, Wendy, you were right on, winter sports has been so fun. On Friday, my son had hockey on one screen, I had basketball on the other, and we were checking Facebook as, you know, parents were updating with things that were happening, girls' basketball and wrestling, and I mean, we were just, it was our total entertainment. So thank you, staff, students, everybody who is there, making sure that it's so much fun for everybody. What a great thing to do in the winter. Welcome, Dr. Zambrino. Thank you, Dr. Webb, for giving us this gift of being able to have a long transition. You know, you let us know right away what you were needing, and it really gave the board a lot of time with the process. And so thank you so much, both of you. That's all, I think, for tonight. So that is our agenda, and looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, Bill. Second?
Second.
Fantastic. Any discussion? And that motion carries, so the meeting is adjourned at 6:00?
51.
51. I need my glasses. Thanks so much, everybody. Bye. I wanted to throw my mask across the room, like the graduates throwing their hats up in the air.
In all these years, I've never heard of the Boo-Hoo-Yahoo.
Oh, really? For the kindergarten?
That's fantastic.
Connie would, so it was a total ruse that she had set up. So as an ingomming kindergarten parent, you could come in, she goes, well, I'm going to have a breakfast for parents, and you could stay as long as you need till you're comfortable. And they would start us off with first walking us into the breakfast, and she'd pull, you know.